...us within every single day you allow us to be a part of this, this world you put us in. We ask that you watch over us today as we discuss the business for this county and give us wise and thoughtful discussion and wise decisions in the end. We ask that you protect our community. There's a resurgence of that awful virus that you have and variants going around. We pray that you will, will protect us all and keep us out of the hospital and our families and friends and just our whole community. Continue to watch over, guide us, and protect us. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, following for which it stands.
Thank you. You may be seated.
All the road please gal.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion, Craig Lynch, David Jones, Jim Everwater, Lee Bogle, Marvin Whitworth, Mike Kush, Pettis Reed, Ron Allen, Jeff Phillips.
President.
We have a forum.
Thank you gal. This time we need to approve our minutes for our March the 8th meeting. I'll call on our vice chair Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I have a copy of those minutes and I have read through those and I have found no problems. I move for their approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the March 8th, 2021 meeting of the commission meeting, minutes. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you. No items withdrawn or deferred, so we'll get right into our business. Item 6A, we have one item that's submitted for preliminary plan approval, 6A1. The item number is 21-1010, Wilson Overall Estates, 32 lots on 20-plus acres, zoned RM, located along Wilson Overall Road. Amon Shiberman is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you and good morning commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well today. This particular plan that we're looking at today, staff has actually seen several different renditions of the subdivision on this property. The plan currently under consideration is for 32 lots on about 20 acres. These are all 15,000 square foot plus lots. This is just a conventional RM subdivision. Strawberry Hill, one of the roads, it's the middle of the three roads right there. You can see all three of the roads do terminate in a cul-de-sac. However, you do see that there is right-of-way extension to the property. That would be to the west as you're looking at that plan, which would be at the top of the screen, but that would be to the west. So if that property develops in the future, there is some interconnectivity with this, getting back to overall, Wilson Overall Road. Most of our, pretty much all of our comments actually have been addressed. This plan is actually in pretty good order. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Doug, if I'm reading this right, all three of these little roads have no access or ingress egress other than off of Wilson Overall. So once you're in the back of the subdivision, the only way out is?
Those is Wilson Overall. That's correct. Now again, that center street, Strawberry Hill, there is right-of-way stubbing into the property, which would be to the west. So in the future, if that were to develop, then there would be multiple ways in and out there. But the other two are just small cul-de-sac streets. That's correct.
Doug, did you say all engineering concerns have been addressed?
Correct. The, yeah, sorry. Yes, they have. What they are proposing, you can kind of see lot, I believe it's 28, and the, it would be the northwest corner of the property. They're going to have a detention pond for all these lots. There is one section kind of at the end of Huckleberry Court. It's kind of a low area. And if I could get to my maps, I would show you. Cross your fingers. Okay, there we go. So there's Strawberry Hill. That's the road that Doug was talking, is going to continue on. This is the Huckleberry Court. There's a little bit of a swag in here. And what they're proposing is to pipe this all the way to a regional, semi-regional pond, I guess, or pond for the subdivision in this, this corner here. So we have not seen full construction plans, but what we see on the preliminary, we think can make, they can make work. And it's some of the best soil that I've seen in a while. A lot of Lowman and Harpeth and so these should be some good-sized four-bedroom houses, maybe even more.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve subject to any staff comments, although I haven't heard any.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-1010, Wilson Overall Estates. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B, nine items submitted for final plat approval. 6B1, the item number is 21-2042. Jernigan Property, one lot on 1.07 acres, zoned RL, located along Midland-Fosterville Road. Clinton Jernigan is the applicant. Includes a waiver for an unbuildable lot. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant owns property directly across the street from this proposed lot. He wishes to purchase the property, but is not able to currently test it for septic soils, which is why he's asking for a waiver basically for an unbuildable lot on this particular piece of property. It's our understanding that he has no intention of actually building on the property. He's just trying to own the property to save it so he doesn't have another unit across the street from him. He does understand that a re-subdivision plat would be needed to be submitted for us to look at showing the soils area, should that ever change, or if he were to sell the property or whatnot. If it's platted with the waiver, basically it'll just be a, it'll just remain vacant land like it is right now until the point where somebody will actually try to do some soil analysis on it. Regarding our comments, most of our comments have been addressed. There are a few tweaks that just need to be made as far as culvert sizes, adding a culvert, what would be a culvert underneath any proposed driveway on the property. And then I think these got a typo on one of the lot sizes, but besides that, I mean, those are things that we can ensure are done prior to any plat being recorded. So we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Staff's recommendation?
We'd recommend approval.
Make motion approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-2042, Jernigan Property. And I'm assuming that motion was with staff comments. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B2, item number 21-2048, Hickory Lane Subdivision, two lots on 2.14 acres, zoned RM, located along Hickory Lane. Blue Door Homes is the applicant. Includes a waiver for off-site soils. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to split this property into two separate lots. The Board of Zoning Appeals back in 2003 did grant a conditional use permit to allow two units on the property. The existing house on Lot 2 would remain. However, the mobile home that's located on Lot 1 has been removed and the applicant plans to replace it with a second, a new residential unit. The septic site for the existing house, which you can see on Lot 2, you can see the, Mike's circling it there, that's the existing soil area for the residents on Lot 2. They have identified additional soils on both lots, but the applicant is asking for a waiver to keep his existing septic on Lot 2. So he's just asking for a off-site soils easement for that. Our other comments have been addressed. The fire hydrant requirement is that there is a fire hydrant close enough to these lots, so there's no need for any kind of a fire hydrant waiver. It's simply to keep the existing system for Lot 2 having an easement to that on Lot 1. So with that, again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, would you explain, refresh our memory, there's two lots and both of the soils will be on one of the lots at somewhere, is that right?
Right. Lot 1 will have a, you can see an existing, there's an existing system on Lot 1 for whatever unit they put on that property. There's existing soil for Lot 2. They did find additional soil on Lot 2, but they don't have any plans right now for that existing residence to shift their soil area back to that soils that they found on Lot 2. This will basically be used for a backup area. So to answer your question, yes, both systems would be on Lot 1.
So at sometime in the future, if the soils for Lot 2, if that septic system starts having problems, who's going to fix it?
The owner for Lot 2, because it'd be their system. So they'd have to be the one responsible for doing any kind of a repair on that. Or if they were to shift their septic site to that soil that was identified in the back of Lot 2, then they could just, they would bear the costs for that. I don't think we're, Lot 1 wouldn't be responsible for, at least I wouldn't think, wouldn't be responsible for any of the costs of trying to repair a system that was used for Lot 2. That would, that would be on the owner of Lot 2.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments and the waiver request.
Have a motion and a second to approve item number 21-2048, Hickory Lane Subdivision. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B3, 21-2050, Karen's Corner Subdivision, three lots on 4.69 acres, zoned RM, located off Betty Ford Road and East Jefferson Pike. Shane Hall and Keith Strain are the applicants. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to split this property into a total of three lots. Lot 1 would be right there at the intersection of Betty Ford and East Jefferson Pike. Lot, looks like 2 has frontage along East Jefferson, if I'm reading that right. My eyes aren't as good as they used to be. Yes. And Lot 3 is on Betty Ford Road. There is an existing house on Lot 1, which will remain. All the septic soil has been identified, as well as the existing systems shown on Lot 1. A fire hydrant will have to be installed. It can be supported in this area. No waivers are required for this. It's coming before you today because it's a three-lot subdivision and we can only approve administratively things that are one and two lots without waivers. So this comment seemed to be addressed on this. Everything seems to be in good order. They will need to show the location of the fire hydrant on the plat before we record it, but other than that, everything looks to be in order with it.
Thank you, Doug. Questions or comments?
I'll make motion approve, subject to staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-2050, Karen's Corner Subdivision. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B4, 21-2051, Thompson Downs, Section 1, 28 lots on 30.76 acres, zoned RL, located along Richland-Richardson Road. WR Thompson Homes is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in July of last year. This final plat is consistent with that preliminary design. Pretty much all of our comments have been addressed. There's a couple of tweaks they need to make. I wasn't able to see where they identified the remaining land as far as acreage is concerned. And they need to add some symbology to one of the lots, just to make it a little clearer that it requires a critical lot grading plan. I believe that was Lot 1. But other than that, most of our, all of our comments have been addressed. Those are just a couple tweaks that we can make sure get done prior to the plat being recorded. So again, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Doug, you think most of these have been resolved?
Yes. Yeah, just a couple tweaks and then everything else is fine with it. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make motion approve with staff comments.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve and a second. Item number 21-2051, Thompson Downs, Section 1. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B5, 21-2052, David Pruitt Subdivision, one lot on 2.29 acres, zoned RL, located along Rocky Hill Road. David R. Pruitt is the applicant. This includes a fire hydrant waiver. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to create a 2.3-acre lot from a 60-acre tract. That'd leave about 57 and a half-ish acres left on the site. Septic soils have been identified, but there is no fire hydrant within 1,000 feet of this proposed lot. In correspondence with CUD does indicate that the existing section, six-inch waterline, excuse me, will not support a fire hydrant. So the applicant is asking for a waiver to that provision simultaneous with plat approval. Our other comments have been addressed. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments and approve with the waiver request.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to approve item number 21-2052, David R. Pruitt Subdivision. Questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B6, item 21-2053, Davenport Station, Section 3, Phase 3A, 23 lots on 3.63 acres, zoned PUD, located along Brown Hall Lane, BMCH Tennessee is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in August of 2017. Again, this plat is consistent with that approved design. Our comments have been addressed on this particular subdivision. The only outstanding comment, and this is something we'll verify before we'll allow the plat to be recorded, is that the fire hydrant locations will need to be shown on the plat. And the engineer has acknowledged that that will be done prior to a plat recording. So again, pretty, pretty good plat. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
And just to update, the traffic signals at Rucker and 231 have been installed. We just need to get power to them, let them flash for seven days, and then they'll be operational. So.
I just fixed a comment on that. When I, when I come through there, it scares me sometimes, did I run that red light or was it on yet?
It was off. It's still covered. We don't have power to it yet. We've got to get, it's electric out there.
Yeah. We say when you put a, put a red light up, need a red light up, there's a lot of work went into that red light.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And they will be paving the turn lanes later this week. So look for the barrels and a lot of traffic delays.
Make motion approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve 21-2053, Davenport Station, Section 3, Phase 3A. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B7, 21-2054, Nature Walk, Section 5, 40 lots on 11.12 acres, zoned PUD, located along Beulah Rose, Beulah Rose Drive. Invest Homes is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in January of 2014. Again, similar with the other larger subdivisions we've looked at, this plat is consistent with that approved design. Our comments have been addressed. There really is nothing outstanding at this point. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Move its approval. Staff comments?
We have a motion and a second to approve 21-2054, Nature Walk, Section 5. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B8, 21-2055, Walnut Chase, Section 1, 37 lots on 48.82 acres, zoned PUD, located along Blue Ash Way. Walnut Chase Partnership is the applicant. I have to be real careful about how I say Blue Ash Way. Doug?
Yes, sir. The preliminary plan for this development was approved back, by the Planning Commission back in February of last year. Again, it is consistent with the approved design. You'll recall that this PUD actually went through a couple different renditions. They had to come back and reduce the amount of lots due to wetland soils and things way in the back. So they lost, if I remember, about two-thirds of the lots, if I remember correctly. All that being said, again, this plat is consistent with the updated and new design. Our comments have been addressed from a planning standpoint for the most part. They have not put a surveyor stamp on the plat yet, which will be done prior to recording. This is just a review set, so that's not, oh, actually, there is one on there. I'm sorry. He did put it on there. The original one we looked at did not, so that's, that's in good order. Mike does have some comments about some of the drainage easements on these lots, so I'll turn it over to him for that.
And one of our comments was, they are showing a drainage easement along the back of all of these lots. And I'll give you a reference. That would be in this area right here. So the construction plans had, and I'll go back to this, the construction plans had the lots draining to the road and then from the road, the stormwater network into a pond here. So it was self-contained and going on its way. But however, this was not a designed drainage easement. The lots were built up. There is a drainage easement along the back of Walnut Grove Road. And we asked them about that, said, why include a drainage easement on the back of these lots? And it says, due to the drainage on adjoining lots in Walnut Grove Farms. So that's something we'll need to work out. It's not a big issue. So we just need to clarify this section, and I'll show you on the contours if I can without it locking up, hopefully. So water was heading kind of towards the east, towards Walnut Grove Farms here. They've got a ditch on their side, and then it goes into a drainage network and goes back to a pond back here. So the engineer of Walnut Grove, Walnut Chase, excuse me, Walnut Chase, said it just made more sense to include the drainage easement back there. But we can, that's something we can, we can hash out. It's not a big deal. It's just that the, the construction plans did not show a drainage easement, did not show water flowing that way. They internalized their water and sent it a different direction. So he just thought it was a better idea to keep it a drainage easement so nobody would fill in that area behind it. And that's, that's his, his stance on it. So one way or the other, I'm okay with it.
All the drainage down in all those lots that we've approved down there, it's, you got to watch it pretty close, don't you? Because it's.
Oh, yes, sir.
It's all flat, it's all low, and it'll all have to be tied in orchestrated together. If, if one stumps a toe, the whole stumps a toe.
Yes, sir. So that's, that's why I'm saying, you can kind of see the, the hook of the contours. This is the existing flow path through here. So they've installed a drainage ditch along their back line, Walnut Grove Farms, which will pick up this water and then send it on their way. They, Walnut Chase, internalized their water, built their lots up so they would drain to the road and then send it to the pond in the back. So I'm okay with leaving it. It just didn't make sense because there wasn't a designed flow path through there.
You got it. You got it designed on paper and looks good, but when you go out there and make sure that grade.
Yes, sir. Right.
That blade does what it's supposed to do then.
Right.
I, I make a motion approve, subject to staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-2055, Walnut Chase, Section 1. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B9, 21-2056, Clearview Acres, Section 3, 45 lots on 14.37 acres, zoned PUD, located along Falling Star Way, 3BC is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in October of 2016. Again, this is consistent with their approved design. Something we do like about this particular section is it's adding that second connection back to the main, back to the main road. So that's, I know, something that staff is concerned about. I know the Planning Commission has concerns about as well, but this will, excuse me, allow for multiple ways in and out of this particular development. We asked, most of our comments pretty much have been addressed. Again, there was one leftover comment to amend one of the notes, just to update the zoning of the surrounding property. They have done that. So from our standpoint, again, this plat appears to be in good order. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-2056, Clearview Acres, Section 3. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 7, staff reports. Doug, you got something?
Yes, sir. I have some amendments to, possible amendments, I should say, to discuss with the Planning Commission, if you would indulge me for just a little bit. We talked about, there's a couple things on here that we want to talk about. One of them dealing with cargo containers as accessory structures. And then the other talking about, it's a little unrelated, but it's all kind of in the same, same area, in the zoning ordinance, outdoor parking and storage of major recreation equipment. On your iPads, you'll have a copy of the proposed potential, I should say, amendments. This is something we've been working on for the last several weeks. Mike's got them on the, the big screen as well. Cargo containers, and you can see at the bottom of that first page, we put a definition there. Container fabricated for the purpose of transporting freight or goods on a truck, railroad, or ship, also known as shipping container, storage units, et cetera. This is something we talked with the Planning Commission back, Lord, it's been a few months now that we talked about this. This is something that we're seeing more and more of in the county. We do have one that we're aware of that's actually, somebody called and complained about it. But we know that there's others out there. We also know that there are a lot of folks that use these as part of farm, to store hay and things like that. From an agricultural standpoint and use, we really aren't as concerned because those are exempt from our regulations anyway. But we're seeing more and more, and we're getting more and more phone calls about people wanting to use basically these containers for personal storage on their property. So I know we talked about it a few months back, but we want to at least bring it back to you, just to kind of show you as a possible route of how we might want to go about looking at possibly regulating these. What we would propose, we'd add a new section under number 8. These would be accessory in the residential zones. You could use them for personal storage. You only have, be allowed to have one on any residential zoning district. They'd be considered as accessories buildings, so would have to adhere to the requirements for setbacks, the requirements for lot coverage as far as the amount of square footage for detached accessory structures on lots. Right now, for properties, an acre or less, it's 2,000 square feet of detached accessory space cumulative, and then it's a sliding scale after you get past an acre. It's 5% of the lot area. You could have cargo containers if you could meet the restrictions below. If they're used as stor, in number C, letter C, I should say. Containers used as storage, they're not to be used as shops, hobby rooms, offices, et cetera. Not to be used for storage of passenger vehicles. Don't want to. passenger vehicles, don't want to see them stacked on top of another, not want them storing any high-hazard group H occupancy, and Tanya can give you a little bit more information as to what that would entail. And we wouldn't want to see them equipped with plumbing or electrical power or lighting, it basically would just be for storage. We did put a, on D, letter D there, we did say that any container that had been modified would have to meet all the applicable regulations, building codes, fire codes, et cetera. Now, something that we did have a concern about is sometimes these things can come off of a railroad or a ship or something, and they're, let's just say, they're not the most attractive things to look at sometimes. So, what we have seen, other examples and other areas in the country have done, they require some sort of exterior wall covering, be it like siding or something like that around it, just to make it look more like you'd see any kind of a typical storage unit that you would buy at like Home Depot or something like that. So, what we did was say, okay, exterior wall coverings would be required, provided they consist of any product approved with the residential building code. And then, of course, we'd require permits for all of those. So, that just kinda gives you an idea of what we're thinking about as far as, again, a possible direction on this. Really, this is just for discussion, just to kinda get your thoughts and opinions on this. Tanya, if she has anything to add, I'd be more than happy to hear those as well, if she wanted to add anything to this. So, we'll start with this, and then we'll get into the outdoor parking of storage and major recreation equipment, because again, they're kinda similar, but they're separate.
So, Doug, I have a question. I see an up-and-coming trend to use these cargo containers for, I won't call them like nurseries or landscaping room, kinda like a greenhouse, an enclosed greenhouse with the lights in it and all that sort of thing. I think people are starting to get more, a little bit back to that grow-your-own-food movement. So, how will this eliminate that possibility for people? I mean, it's kinda hard, or can they just make it look like, what you're saying is they can make it look like the house or the neighborhood, and then they can put power in it and that sort of thing?
Well, this wouldn't allow it to be, just the container itself wouldn't allow it to be used with any plumbing or electrical, you know, the way we've got it drawn up right now. Again, if it's an agricultural building on agricultural land, it's pretty much exempt from our requirements, I don't know if there'd be much we could say about that. But, the way we've got it drawn up right now, these would just be used for storage, it wouldn't be used for any kind of, like you were saying, greenhouse or anything like that, so... But that's why we're talking about it today, you know, we're wanting to get ideas, wanting to kinda get your thoughts about how to move forward with this. And again, Tanya, I didn't know if you wanted to chime in as far as putting power or plumbing in any of these things, what the issues may be for something like that?
Requiring some modification to it, making it look a little bit better on the outside. Now, I know if I got one on my farm, and it probably looks, it might look better than the building it's sitting next to. So, I got a little problem. Now, an HOA, if it's in a subdivision, which it probably can't be, they take care of that. But, if, how do we designate for farm use? Do we... I don't want them having to be covered on the side if it's out for farm use, because I think that'll come back to bite us. But then, to designate what a farm is, that land has to be on a green belt.
Well, yeah, and again, if it were strictly for, if it was a legitimate agricultural use, we've got other language in the ordinance, kind of a catch-all that says that, I mean, these regulations pretty much don't apply, because the state law pretty much exempts any kind of local zoning authority for that. So, if somebody came and just wanted to say, "Well, I'm using this for storage of hay on my farm," or something like that, I mean, yeah, they wouldn't have to do, a lot of this wouldn't apply to them anyway, so...
Well, Jim, if you had your Corvette, would it go in one of these? Would a car...
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, if you've got a car that you don't ever drive and you're saving, and we're saying they can't put a vehicle in it, we figure you've got the antique-type car, I don't know what the width is, would it go? That would might be something that would... It should be, yeah. I don't know, there's some things to think about.
And that's why we're bringing it before you. You know, this was kind of our first stab, like I said, we've gone back and forth on, from the staff level, about what to put in here, but we wanted to get some other input before, first of all, are you interested, and second of all, you know, if you are, is this okay, or do you want us to make some changes to it? That's kinda what we're here for today.
Doug, I got a question about 3C as well. On the motorized passenger vehicles, immediately I was thinking of, you know, an ATV or a golf cart or a motorcycle, but was there some specific reason that you wanted to exclude motorized passenger vehicles?
This was something that we saw in some other regulations that we looked at. I think it was more on the lines of, we were looking at fire hazards and things like that, is kind of what we were looking at. Did you want to address any of that?
Well, when we talked about this, we decided to do it, start out the most restrictive, to discuss it with you guys and let us go from there. So, we did take these regulations from other jurisdictions that were fairly restrictive, so that's what we thought we'd start with. We're open to discussion on just about anything. No, there was no specific reason except that they are fuel-fired. These containers, when they're sealed up, get hot in the inside, so that's where the high hazard and the fuel-fired vehicles and stuff came from. Along those lines, then, is the danger storing it in this type of a structure greater than any other type of structure it was stored in? That one, I think, is Josh here? That might be a good question for Josh, our Assistant Fire Chief.
Good morning. So, the concern, I think, would be not only the storage, we've got a limited ventilation in these things, so you can have a buildup depending on what's being stored in there of flammable vapors, so that can be a concern. There's not a, typically in these types of containers, there's not a reasonable way to vent these without, you know, modification. Another concern would be, you know, when you're storing vehicles, then what additional activities are going on there? Are they charging the vehicle? Do we have chargers going? Now, we've got flammable vapors and chargers going on, so that there would be a number of things that would raise some concern with the storage of hazardous... Again, a vehicle, you know, has, you know, well over, in some cases, a thousand pounds of combustible materials on it or in it at any given point, and as well as the fuel storage within it, so that would raise certainly a concern for us, you know, and again, where are these vehicles being, where are these containers, you know, in proximity to structure if we're talking about residential lots, explosion hazards and things of that case?
Thank you, Josh.
Josh, before you sit down, these are also usually metal, and does that not give y'all a more difficult time as far as having, would have to deal with a fire, be making a little more tougher situation too?
You say, as far as there being construction of metal?
Those containers are usually heavy steel.
It could be an access issue for sure, you know, if it's locked, of course, anytime you have fire infringement on a metal structure, it begins to deform, so if we're looking at getting, being able to get access to extinguish a fire of that type, it could be an access issue for sure.
But it doesn't sound much different than a detached garage that's made of wood structure and closed up anyway.
We have much easier ways of getting into garages versus, say, a steel container, for sure.
Through walls or cutting?
Through walls, you know, an overhead door is very thin, it can be easily forced through, not to mention if it's detached, usually that we're gonna have requirements for an exterior man door, so we can easily make access through theirs versus, in these situations, we're looking at pretty much just a steel wall container with one access point. And I'd say, in addition to concerns, I would say the biggest concern on our end would probably be accessory use of these structures for, and I know it was mentioned in the proposed guidelines, for, you know, working, making shops out of them, you know, making workshops, commercial-use shops, things like that, that would obviously raise concern, because that increases the hazard, and it also increases occupancy. You know, go from just a unit designed for storage purposes, now we're putting people in it with no impact of egress or fire protection, detection, anything like that.
Before you sit down, Commissioners, this is our new Fire Marshal, and I think this is something very good for Rutherford County. This is a first for us, and we really appreciate him taking the reins of this.
Yes, sir, thank you, Commissioners, appreciate you.
If I run my four-wheeler in there, and if I run my garden tiller, and I run my little red-bellied Ford tractor, and I put that in there, and then I've got three or four-gallon, five-gallon things of gasoline that I put in there, would you always put in some kind of storage? Would be one avenue to require, if you're going to score that kind of stuff, require some kind of vent. I agree that, and trailer trucks are hot, no, they're hot on the inside, they're extremely hot, and, but somewhere for the fumes to vent out, maybe a way to solve this problem.
You're asking me?
I'm asking the world.
It's certainly worth review, it's certainly worth a discussion with myself and Josh and Doug to see if that's an option, to see if some sort of modification to the unit would be acceptable to allow for that purpose.
That's one thing, based on the direction we go with the watercraft and ATVs in the next section you're gonna talk about, then that C3 is gonna make a big difference.
Do you want me to go on to the next?
So, does Section D cover what we were talking about? If someone wanted to run electricity and water and do some upgrades, then they gotta fall under the regulations to go through probably a cumbersome process to be able to get that to a standard?
Yeah, that'd be item D at that point, right, that's how we're that falling, that's correct.
I think we're agreeing, most of us are anyway, that this is worth consideration. Maybe C3 needs a little bit more tweaking, so have a further discussion on that, and then we'll think about it and bring it back to us.
Yes, sir.
Does that sound okay?
Sounds fine. Very good, very good. Moving on to the next particular item, which is outdoor parking of storage and major recreation equipment. We've run into some issues, especially on larger lots, not so much the smaller ones, with people who have multiple RVs or multiple campers and things like that. We have run into one where somebody was using it as kinda like an Airbnb rental type situation. Now, that's covered under a different part of our ordinance. We can take care of that, but as far as the storage of them, that was becoming an issue, so we wanted to look at our existing regulations, which are found in our zoning ordinance, which right now, basically, anything that are, anything, any property less than an acre is allowed outdoor storage of no more than one watercraft and trailer for such watercraft, two all-terrain vehicles and trailer, one utility trailer, and no more than one camping trailer or RV per dwelling unit. Now, the issue, one of the issues we were having with the wording of that was, is it one of all of those things? Like, you're allowed to have one watercraft, two all-terrain vehicles, one utility trailer, one camping trailer, one RV, or was it, you get one and that was it? What we're proposing, what you see on the screen right now, well, let me go back, that was for properties on less than an acre. Basically, pretty much anything over an acre, there wasn't a limit. So, what we were looking at here, and we know that there's gonna be discussion about this, we just wanted to throw this out there, rather than have a distinction between the smaller lots and the larger lots, we just decided, okay, let's just make it all the same across the board. If you have a residentially zoned lot, you can have outdoor storage, and I'll get to that in a minute, outdoor storage of no more than one of the following, and we kinda broke them out into the watercraft and trailer, ATVs and trailer, a utility trailer, or a camping trailer, or RV. We also have regulations currently that, as far as where they are parked, parking of recreational vehicles, et cetera, are allowed in the front yard on a hard dustless surface. Again, we were starting to run into some issues with that, so we just said allowed on an existing driveway, now that you can see there for number two. Number three, the requirements of 1101-01 allow for each dwelling unit on properties consistent with a different section of principal limitations. Let me just kind of explain this a little bit. That section, 1101-01, is what we're looking at right here, that's what's on the screen. 1101-E deals with properties that are 15 acres or larger and have two principal units on the property, because we do allow for that, so we wanted to make sure that it was clear that each dwelling unit could have one watercraft or trailer, all-terrain vehicle, et cetera, et cetera, that's the reason for that. So, what we're proposing, at least right now, is that you're allowed to have outdoor storage of any, of anything on that list, one of those things, either A, B, C, or D. Indoor storage, if you had them in a garage, that's fine, you could have an outdoor storage of one or of these things, but you could have indoor storage as well. So, we're not limiting necessarily to just one of these and that's it, it's just outdoor storage of one of these is really what we're considering at this point. Again, we know there's gonna be discussion about this. Some other tweaks that we made to the ordinance a little further down under P, Temporary Portable Storage Regulations. These regulations were developed when the pod storage was becoming a big thing, you know, where somebody brings over a pod, they fill it up, then the company comes, picks it up, and then they bring it to wherever they're moving and whatnot. We still see that, but we're also seeing a lot of these places where you can call and you can have a dumpster brought to your property, where you can get rid of all the junk in your house, and then they take it to wherever, they take it to landfill, I guess. So, we tweaked this a little bit to account for that. So, it's a portable structure, temporary portable structure, it's defined as any structure which is enclosed by walls, and we added with or without a roof, because a lot of these dumpsters don't have that. And then, we kinda tweaked the language just a little bit. We took out the definition of cargo containers specifically, because that was a different definition, and then under number one, you'll see for, we tweaked that language just a little bit, this allows for the debris removal, you know, so they're allowed for storage or removal of materials commonly incidental to the occupancy of principal residential use. Everything else on here, we pretty much left the same. We did clarify a couple of things under number two, and, let's see, that'd be 2B and 2C. These are, the temporary use permits are typically issued by the Codes Department after they've consulted with us. The language originally had it where the Planning Director could do that, so we just tweaked it to say what really happens, really is what we're doing. But, the bulk of the discussion on this and the changes really are under O, you know, one, two, and three. So, again, if you've got questions and want me to explain it a little further, that's fine, I may have kinda breezed through that, but just wanted to open up for discussion and kinda get the Planning Commission's thoughts on this.
Doug, back up on number one, am I on where it says only residential zone lots? Does this supersede the HOAs?
Well, HOAs and zone, I mean, the quick answer, no. If an HOA doesn't allow these things, they would have to be the vehicle to enforce that. And if they, and we tell people this all the time, especially when it comes to like accessory structures and things, if somebody will come into our office and say, "Hey, I wanna put up a, you know, a small Dutch barn or a small accessory structure in the backyard," we'll tell them, you know, "We'll permit it, because, you know, we don't enforce HOA covenants, nor do we adhere to any of them." But, we tell people all the time, you know, if your HOA does not allow this, just because you get a permit from us, doesn't mean that they couldn't take action against you for doing it. So, it's, it doesn't really supersede, they're separate, so one doesn't supersede the other.
Well, subsequent to that, we just approved, how many lots at Davenport Station? Twenty-three lots on 3.6 acres, and I divided that out a couple of days ago, and that's about 6,500 square feet per lot, average. Where are they gonna put this?
Well, and, you know, that's a very good question.
They have no place to put anything.
And we're seeing, because of that, we're seeing a lot of, we're getting a lot of requests at the office for either self-storage areas that want to include an area for boat and RV storage and those kind of things, or we're getting calls about people that just wanna open up a, basically a parking area for boats and RVs. We get, I mean, I probably take a call a week on those things, at least, so...
Also note on this, Doug, that you said it's okay to park in the driveway, put your boat or RV in the driveway. That also is gonna lead to not being able to use said driveway and/or garage and cause parking in the street if we're not careful, so these are things I think we need to look at.
Right, and I agree with you. And now, one of the issues we were having are people that just kinda park them in their front yard, you know, and... in their front yard, you know, and of course, that's not very sightly. We don't necessarily want to see that, but, um, we're trying to maybe tighten that language up a little bit, because the way we had it right now, you could park in the front yard on a hard dustless surface, which typically is their driveway, but we were starting to see people that, you know, paved small areas in front of their property, weren't necessarily part of their driveway, per se. So, that was, uh, something we're trying to address as well.
The group that concerns me is what once, well, my family in particular, a hundred years ago was agriculture and large, is now being cut down and cut down and cut down to where you get down to a 10, 20 acre parcel. And then, I, I know myself, I have four different trailers for four specific purposes, but it's no longer zoned agriculture, it's zoned residential medium density. So, now do these rules apply to, in those situation as well? Because, you know, we, we still, even though it's not as much, we still cut hay and run tractors and do different things, it's just on a much smaller scale than traditional full-time agriculture. I call it kind of hobby farm, I guess you would say. So, but it's zoned residential, residential medium density. So, uh, and I agree that, you know, I don't want it to become unsightly or be in the subdivisions like what you're talking about, but there has to be something, not saying it's allowed, or it, it would be okay to clutter up my property, because I try to keep it as neat as I can, and all the trailers in order, weed eat around, and, you know, everything maintained, but to limit how many I can buy, you're limiting what somebody can purchase, what somebody can buy. I mean, that, that's getting kind of restrictive, really. But, but I don't disagree that in those situations, to keep that cluttered down, and when it physically can't fit on a 6,500 square foot lot, then there needs to be some provisions made there.
If, if I've got an RV or a pool-type camper, I probably got a boat. So, I guess I park my boat in my cargo container.
Hmm.
A good, long cargo container where I can put the stuff behind it, and when I want to take one out, I pull everything out on the street and get the one I want, put the rest of it back in it, so we might run into that.
Is it possible to have a bit looser restrictions or allow more, um, you know, an additional utility trailer along with your RV or something on lots of, say, five acres or two acres or whatever we decide, rather than just going by general residential zoning?
Mm-hmm.
Do it on an acre, just for size of the lot?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can kind of toy with the language a little bit. Again, we knew this was going to have discussion, so, you know, this, this wasn't our, you know, this was our first real stab at it, you know, I would say this wasn't the be-all, end-all. Uh, I mean, you know, even for detached accessory structures, we have a limit, or not a limit, we, uh, make a differentiation between lots that are smaller than an acre and anything larger than an acre. I mean, there may be ways to build that in. I just, we were trying to go for simplicity here. We didn't want to make it too complicated at the same time, but I'm sure there's a way to, to think about.
You've got to start somewhere.
Exactly.
But, my first thought is, boy, I'm going to have the longest driveway in the county on my 10 acres.
We're soon going to be coming up with more regulations on stuff than we are on what we're trying to do with our, our property within this county if we're not careful, because we've become a society of stuff, and, uh, this is what we're going to continually be facing with.
Mm-hmm.
As we reduce the size of our property, people keep increasing the amount of what we place on it. This is a difficult thing to deal with.
Hmm.
And in the County Commission, we deal this, I mean, we're right now in the middle of, of a, a solid waste issue. Recycling centers where people are not trying to recycle, but yet we keep adding to. Uh, you probably don't want my philosophy, so I'm just, just as I see this right here, but, but if you'll just drive our subdivisions and things of this type, you just see more and more of it, you can't get through the street. And when I see, like, our Fire Marshal that's here today, we've added a Fire Marshal. A lot of counties don't have this, but we're doing this due to the fact of things that are occurring within this county. But, we soon are going to have to face these things of this infrastructure, of how do we get our fire engines, our ambulances, our police down these streets? And this is something we'll have to go within our decisions made upon our developments out here to make sure that, hey, we can't be blocking these things, because we will not be able to assess our citizens. Ordo, we do these correctly.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate all the discussion. Like I said, we knew that these were, uh, again, our first stabs at this, so we knew that this wasn't going to, uh, you know, we weren't going to have a recommendation one way or the other on this, but this definitely gives us, uh, some food for thought and a direction to, to move forward in.
It is definitely needed. I mean, we talk about the corridors and the preservation of those historic corridor, and we want it to look beautiful. We're proud of our county, so, I mean, this is something we need to address. We just had to work through the details.
Yes. Well, we'll keep tweaking on it, and, uh, we'll bring back next month, we'll bring back some, uh, based on the discussion here, we'll bring back some, some changes to that, to see how that, how that works.
Doug, I do want to add one thing to that. It's been a very long time since I can remember approving a subdivision with one acre lots. And I think if you've got an acre, you've got a little elbow room between you and the neighbor, and so I think that's probably a good place to kind of draw the line. When you've got those neighborhoods that are smaller than an acre, that's when you're right on top of each other.
Yeah.
And so, I think that is probably kind of where the line needs to be.
Okay. And again, like I mentioned earlier, that would be consistent with some of the other regulations we have already, especially with detached structures, because we do make that differentiation between properties that are less than acre and anything larger, so that's, well, point well taken.
I know some of our areas to, to put those accessory structures on the back corner of a lot, but if your lot's only 6,500 feet, that's still the front yard. I mean, that's, you know.
Right. Right.
Doug, I, I guess before I spend too much time and worry on this, I want to be sure that a person could take a cargo container and essentially use the structure of that cargo container, but, but convert that to an accessory building, maybe with a, a skin on the outside of it, and add electrical, and essentially make it into a detached garage or a detached workshop, hobby shop, or whatever. We're not completely eliminating the possibility of having cargo trailers, but you could maybe even stack two cargo trailers on top of each other and use storage on the, in the, in the upper section, as long as it looks like and acts like an accessory building, we can still use them. Is that the intention?
Well, that's what we wanted to get some feedback on. Uh, you know, I don't know, there may be some other, uh, issues to consider about stacking them, uh, on top of each other, uh, but we'll, Tanya and myself, our staffs, we'll get together, we'll get, um, our Fire Department staff as well involved, uh, you know, to get their take on things, so, and we'll, we'll come back with something.
Some of this goes back to the tiny home discussion we had, because I've seen those online where somebody has used six or eight or 10 of those cargo containers, cut windows and doors and everything, so that's something that probably has to tie in consistently as well.
Yeah, and we've seen that as well now. Right now, we don't allow for the tiny homes, because they don't meet the building code, but, you know, that's a discussion that, that, uh, we have had multiple times in the past, yeah, even among staff. You're right.
Doug, in Gulf Shores, there's an entire restaurant built out of storage containers.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, they're stacked on top of each other, the kitchen, it's, it's all done that way, but, uh, quite, quite interesting.
Yeah.
You know, when you give people the correct rules and regulation, the creativity may come out, so, I like what Jim says there, that's something we may have to look at.
So, so, D, Section D of that amendment that we gave you, we did give them the option of modification of any of the above, um, specifically C, as long as it met the building code and the zoning requirement. So, the option is there if they'd like to put the effort into making it code compliant and, you know, modifying it to meet the fire and the building code.
For purposes of further discussion on outdoor parking, um, we talked about lot size, adding lot size, such as an acre. Uh, we also talked about, um, parking, and it's become an issue at every small lot PUD that we develop, that we're talking about, um, and, and something needs to be added there. Uh, if you put, such as Commissioner Whitworth said, if you put, um, an RV in a driveway that only holds two cars, where the car is going to be parked?
Mm-hmm.
That's the type of issue that we'd like to address.
Right. And we could probably add some language in there that says that, um, you know, parking an RV in an existing driveway, you still need to be able to have the amount of required parking in single-family, because there's regulations in the zoning specifically that mention that, so that's, again, another good point well taken.
You know, I think back to where we were talking about the utilization of the garages for storage and a one-vehicle and a two-car garage, and then a subdivision that came before us, I think a month or two ago, they extended the driveways to accommodate the extra vehicles outdoors, but still, if you park an RV, a full-size RV in there, that's quite a bit on, it's still a small lot. I'm wondering, I'm thinking back to that subdivision, I can't remember the name of it, but there was a lot of green space open. Maybe that's something that the designers can encourage, maybe the, a storage lot dedicated to something like that. A small lot, I mean, not one for every dwelling, but maybe 20% or something.
Well, actually, and one of the PEDs we looked at, they did just, that was Nature Walk, uh, they did just that. They had an area for boat RV storage specifically.
That way, they're there and landscaped and managed in a way that keeps them out of those, keeps those house. So, I don't, there's a lot of opportunity there for ideas.
Yeah, and that's something, yeah, I mean, honestly, that's something to bring up to, uh, developers as they come in with their plans, saying, hey, we're looking, yeah, we're looking to do these smaller lots. Okay, that's all well and good, you've got this open space, well, guess what? You need to start planning for some areas for these boats and RVs that these people are going to have where they don't have them anywhere else.
Right, and it may be a small percentage, a 10, 20% or something, not, not the entire subdivision.
Right, like you said, you don't have to have enough for everybody to have a spot necessarily, because not everybody's going to have one, but, yeah, that's very, very good.
Doug, do you mind if I mention the case that this was born of?
Please.
Um, we got a case in, uh, zoning enforcement where a gentleman had placed three RVs on his property. One of them was his, and two of them was family members. He had, um, he had four acres, by the way, and he had done driveways and a gravel pad for each of these RVs, and he was renting them out Airbnb. Um, so, the Airbnb, obviously renting them out and, and living in them is not permitted by the zoning ordinance, so we were able to, um, kind of nip that in the bud, but, um, storing them on his property, we didn't have any, any regulation that would prevent that. So, what he did was, um, he started advertising that people could come pick the RVs up and take them away to somewhere else where they could, where they could set them up and stay in them as an Airbnb unit. Um, and he also had several trailers and a boat on his property. So, that's kind of where this was born of. There was a loophole, a loophole in the, uh, current zoning ordinance that allowed him to keep all three of those RVs and all of the trailers on his property, much to the detriment of the neighbors. Sorry?
And that starts to look like a mobile home facility.
Well, yes, absolutely, it did.
Something like that.
It did. Yeah.
Yep, so many times, regulation changes, just regulations in general come, and I've told people this at the counter, that, that may, uh, have some concerns about the regulations we have. I said, chances are, the reason these are there is because someone tried to do something with this that they shouldn't have done in the first place, so we had to start regulating it.
Like warning stickers.
It represents a change, and we're all about change, and, uh, we're all about looking for maybe what the place is going to look like in the future, so, uh, even though there's some discussion on this, Doug, we're, we're still forward-thinking, and that's what we're looking for.
Very good. Well, let us, uh, put our heads back together and we'll certainly come up with.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question about parking.
Yes.
A lot of folks don't know that if you've got a septic system, you should not park on top of it, on top of that septic system. And these smaller lots that have step systems, that's where their septic unit is, is in that front yard. Is there anything that we should or could do, whether it's making a note on the plat or something educational that would let folks know, you can't park there for safety reasons for your own, you know, personal use? It's not just sightliness, it's not safe.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything that should be considered with that?
I mean, I guess we could think about putting some standard notations on the, on the plats, uh, something like that. That might be something we could kind of, again, put our heads together about. Uh, obviously, structures and then those of themselves, those things of themselves aren't allowed, so we wouldn't have to worry so much about that, but, that's something that I can think of, just maybe just some standard verbiage on the plat, but again, that's assuming the homeowners and buyers are actually looking at the plats in the first place. That's the, that's the big, only biggest concern I've got about that.
Let's kind of lead the horse to water, we can't make them drink. I mean, we can put it out there, but we can't make them read it, so.
Right.
It's, it's hard to regulate common sense. It really is.
Yeah, no, I couldn't agree with you more.
Other questions? Any comments? Our next meeting is scheduled for August the 9th, that's a Monday at 6:00 PM in this court chamber.